Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Moore?
Here.
All right, let's see, we have one set of minutes from November 7th. Anybody see any changes that were needed to those minutes?
Seeing none, I move to approve.
Either of you want a second?
Sorry, both of us were here.
Uh-oh, okay, I'm gonna second that. So, okay, so now I'm confused about protocol, given that only two of us who were there are here today. Is that enough to approve minute?
It needs to be a quorum of members that were in attendance, so...
All right, so we'll postpone consideration of these minutes until Commissioner Hancock at another meeting, when Commissioner Hancock is also here. Okay, thanks. All right, changes to the agenda. So first of all, under matters at hand, both the annual chair and vice chair election and the project before us should be listed as matters at hand, not as reports by staff. Any other changes? Anybody wants to?
Can we move the annual chair and chair and vice chair elections down to before reports by staff? Or, I'm sorry, by reports by the commission, before that?
So after the 100 Valparaiso project?
Yes.
All right, given that we have a full house here, I imagine they're not here to see our elections, so maybe we'll jump straight to the 100 Valparaiso project. Any objections to that change?
No.
Okay, so with those changes, consider the agenda approved. Oral and written communications, members of the public are invited to step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and this is for comments on items not already on the agenda. So if you're here to talk about the 100 Valparaiso project, sit tight for now. Any comments on items not on the agenda? All right, not seeing any. I'll close that public comment, and we'll move straight to matters at hand. So, this matter is the 100 Valparaiso vesting tentative map amendment, hillside development permit, and preliminary design review, and we'll start with a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Commission members. We have sort of a full team of staff and applicant here tonight, prepared to answer questions for, from you and the public. So I wanna let everyone know that Craig Scott, our city engineer, is here in the audience, and he'll be available to answer questions if you have them. Also doing the bulk of the presentation tonight will be Lori McNabb, who's a consulting planner that takes on some projects for us, and I know you've met her before. This project, as everyone, I think, knows by now, was approved in 2009, and this application that is before you tonight is an amendment to that existing vesting tentative map. The council recently, back last, before the holidays, gave an extension to the existing map, and as a condition of that, required that the re-roofing of the stone structure be completed within 60 days, and I'm happy to let everyone know that that permit, the design has been reviewed by both city staff and an architectural historian, and the permit's been issued, and that roofing work should begin any time. So I think with that, I'll just hand it over to Lori, and we'll get right into the presentation and keep my comments brief. Thank you. Carrie, do you want to flip over the screen?
Oh, ready? Okay, I'm sorry.
Are you getting the right screen up there? I think it's, I think it's in yours. We have a, unless there's, unless there's a cable that's not connected. Okay, well, I'm gonna let Lori go ahead and start the presentation, and we'll catch up with the PowerPoint when, when it's available.
Try unplugging and replugging the HDMI cable.
Is that the blue one?
Yeah, the video cable out the left side.
All right. Hello. So I'll do what I can with all my pretty pictures. Good evening. So we're here tonight for the 100 Valparaiso subdivision map amendment. As Vicki mentioned, this subdivision was approved in 2009, and they are hoping to amend the map. There are three entitlements before you tonight besides the amended map. Besides the vesting tentative map amendment, there's also an entitlement for designer view, and entitlement for the hillside development permit, and then staff is also asking you to adopt an addendum to the previous SEQA document, and I'll go over that at the very end. So the subdivision that was approved in 2009 was a 62-lot subdivision. It had public streets, and it also had a series of private lanes and alleys, and it had 10 affordable units. The 2009 map also required that a historic home be rebuilt and used as a community center, and the historic stone structure, which still exists out there, was going to be set aside on a private lot as an accessory building. The 2009 map also had several pockets of open space, one of them to be used as a ball field, and the others for stormwater. The previous map had a lot of different architectural styles. There was 10 different architectural styles. There were single-family homes, there were townhomes, which would have been what, which would have been the units that accessed off the private lanes and alleys. There were stacked units, like condominium units, and there were duplexes. I'm going over what the previous map was, so we can know what the differences are. So today's map, the amended map, is 45 lots instead of 62. Of those 45 lots, six of the lots will be for affordable homes. In the previous map, all of the units were two-story buildings, while they had some one-story stacked units, single levels, they were all still two-story buildings. So this new map has some one-story, four-one-story units. All the streets in the subdivision are going to be public streets. The one difference between the 2009 map and this map is that Dorfman, the street at Dorfman, kind of bisects the middle of the property connecting two older neighborhoods. In the previous map, they had all these little lanes, so there was some circulation within the site, but this newer map, which you have in your packet, the street circulation allows the interconnection between neighborhoods. This new map, the historic structure is going to be left on a 10,000-square-foot site, and it will be used as, and developed as, like a pocket park. There will be landscaping, a pathway, and informational signage about the historic structure. There's also, on your map, a parcel along Valparaiso that is being set aside for wetland protection and stormwater treatment. And I say wetland protection because, in late last summer, it came to staff's attention that the roadside ditch along Valparaiso had indeed become a wetland, the roadside ditch, and the applicant has worked with the Army Corps of Engineers to delineate that wetland. It's long and linear and not, not very big, and this map that's being proposed will avoid, there's two linear wetlands, it's going to avoid both of them. One of them will completely avoid and leave open. The other, they are proposing to construct a bottomless box culvert and span the wetland so that there will not be any fill, and the wetlands will stay in this common parcel of Butte, Valparaiso, which hopefully, if the PowerPoint comes up, we can show you what the parcel looks like. So staff has gone through the general plan, and we feel like this project meets several elements of your general plan, meets the circulation element, because they, to the extent practical, are proposing a grid system. It's consistent with your community services element, because they are, they are the public services to accommodate the increased demands. They're consistent with the conservation element, because they're preserving the historic resource on site, and this is consistent with the land use element, because this is logical infill development.
All right. Lori, I'm gonna propose we take a five-minute break and try to get this working, because we're already overflowing my brain capacity. All right. All right, as predicted, that took five minutes. We're back. All right, back to you.
I'm gonna start from the top. So here we go. You might recognize some of the words I say. So, good evening, we're here this evening for 100 Valparaiso subdivision vesting tentative map amendment. As I mentioned earlier, there's three entitlements being requested this evening. They want to amend their vesting tentative map for 100 Valparaiso. They're seeking an entitlement for preliminary designer view, and they're seeking an entitlement for the hillside development permit. We are also asking the planning commission this evening to adopt an addendum to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration under SEQA. So before I talk about the vesting tentative map amendment, I want to talk about the subdivision as it was approved in 2009. It was a 62-lot subdivision approved in 2009 with 10 affordable units. Those dark blue lines represent the public streets for the subdivision. These light blue lines were the public lanes and alleys that were created as part of the subdivision. The project had several kind of small pocket parks, and this one right here is kind of set aside as a ball field. The applicant was required to rebuild the historic home on site, and it was going to be used as a community center. And the historic stone building, which still exists out there, and that's that T-shaped building, in the previous map was set aside as an accessory building on a private, in a lot of a private home. I'm gonna show you some of the architecture that was approved with the previous map. There were 10 different unit types, so it had single-family homes, and here's a craftsman-style single-family home that stepped for the topography. They had townhomes, and this would have been a unit that would have been on the public lane with the rear-loaded alley. These are the stacked units, so a condominium unit with a single-level unit above and below, some duplex units. So that's the architecture in the map, and now I'll talk to you about today's map that's before you. This is the amendment, the vesting tentative map amendment proposal. As you can see, all the blue lines, all the streets for the subdivision are proposed to be public streets. This is Dorfman. It is proposed to kind of bisect the property and connect two older neighborhoods. These, I don't know what color you want to call this, yellow, brown, but these are the one-story homes within the subdivision. There will be five one-story homes. All the other buildings will be two-story buildings. On this map, the applicant is proposing to put the historic stone building on a 10,000-square-foot lot, about 10,000 square feet. There will be, it will be landscaped, there will be a pathway, there will be informational signage for anybody to go and enjoy the historic resource. And then there's this large parcel called Parcel A, which will be a common parcel for stormwater treatment and wetland protection. This project also has six affordable homes, and the previous map had 10. So as I mentioned, late last summer, the applicant told the city that there's been wetlands discovered on site, that wetlands exist within the roadside ditch on Valparaiso. They have gone through a process with the Army Corps of Engineers, and it's confirmed that these blue lines, one here and one here, are wetlands, and they will be avoided with the project. I'm going to change the orientation of this map to show you this Parcel A, and then I'm going to overlay on top of it that wetland map, so you can see how that goes. So the one wetland, which exists approximately here, is going to be completely avoided and left untouched. The other wetland that's generally in this area is going to be spanned with this public sidewalk and the street with a bottomless box culvert. So both wetlands, because they're not being touched, would not require a permit from the Army Corps. That large Parcel A is also the stormwater retention and treatment area, so most of that 10-acre parcel drains to these two kind of lots, for lack of a better word, and they're planning to have native landscaping, a meandering dry creek swale, and there'll be informational signage about stormwater treatment, and some seeding is proposed. And then this imagery is in your packet, and shows what it's going to look like. This is more information on the historic building with the, kind of a plan for the park, pocket park, and it's, the stone building is just meant for observation, and there'll be information about the building's past, and this fence is the fence that'll be proposed, just to keep people away. It obviously won't, somebody could climb if they wanted to, but it's just to put a message out there that it's just for observation. This is the project architecture. There's four different architectural schemes and three different unit types. Page one of the plans in your packet, the architectural plans, have all four schemes. Of the six below-market rate units, two are detached homes. This is what the architecture will look like. Four of the units are common wall duplexes. This is what the architecture's proposed. And then four of the lots have second units or granny units proposed, and the architecture for the granny unit would match the main home. In this photo, you see the craftsman style and the cottage style. They've also proposed native landscaping in the front yards. There'll be, oak trees will be the street trees. Staff worked with the applicant to propose a meandering sidewalk, so as you go up that jagal, there'll be, the sidewalk will waver a little bit to give the street some interest, as well as, you can't tell as well in this map, but we've worked with the applicant over time to push forward and push back some of the houses, so it doesn't look like a wall of homes as you go up the street. There'll be some relief. And here's some imagery that shows the type of landscaping that's proposed for the subdivision. So I went over this, I think, a little bit before the PowerPoint came up, but we've gone through the general plan. This project is consistent with several elements in the general plan, the circulation element, because of the grid system is, to the extent practical, there are the appropriate public services on site, they're preserving the historic resource on site, which is consistent with your conservation element, and consistent with your land use element, and this is logical infill development, because this 10-acre parcel is surrounded on three sides with suburban development. This project went before the designer view committee in October, and the designer view committee recommended a few changes for the planning commission's consideration, and I'll go through three of those with you. They wanted those duplex units to have more consistent architecture. They wanted a different treatment for the street-facing side facades, which I'll go over, and they did not want Dorfman to go all the way through the project. They also weren't happy with the historic structure and how it was being preserved. They wanted different, they wanted it to be reused as a building or demolished altogether. They didn't, weren't happy with the pocket park concept. In terms of consistent architecture, so the applicant has proposed that these common wall duplexes would have two different architecture schemes for one building. The designer view committee wasn't happy with this, and was recommended that the duplex units just have one scheme. So for instance, this one duplex would be all craftsman. There are several street-facing side facades in the subdivision, as noted with these red lines. And staff worked with the developer to enhance those street facades. Here's the before, where the stone veneer didn't wrap, and there's not enough windows, staff didn't think. So in the enhanced elevation, they wrapped the stone veneer, they added windows, and they put more decorative features around the windows, and so staff was recommending approval of this bottom one to the designer view committee. Well, the designer view committee is recommending that they take it a step further, and they thought that these fences didn't create a very interesting pedestrian environment, so they wanted the fences not to go all along the side facade, but just fence the backyard and not the side yard, and they wanted more landscaping to create more interest in the pedestrian environment. So that is in consideration for the planning commission. And this is the Dorfman connection. So you saw on the earlier map that the proposal is to put Dorfman all the way through. The designer view committee recommended, and several members of the public came and spoke, they did not want to see Dorfman continue, they want it to end, right at Jagel, and then the applicant is proposing that a private driveway would continue and access two private homes with second units. So in terms of the subdivision design, staff continues to recommend that Dorfman go all the way through. That is because it meets the city's adopted subdivision standard for block length, and it also meets the subdivision code's intent for interconnected neighborhoods. Staff recommends that the commission adopt preliminary designer view, because this project mixes architectural styles. It has housing types that are promoted by the City of Cattati Design Criteria. They've worked to create an interesting street scape, and they have usable front porches. The earlier versions of their plans did not have front porches, but now all of their units have front porches, which meet your city guidelines. And we also feel, staff also feels, that this project, as proposed, blends and interconnects the project with existing neighborhoods. So the project also needs a hillside development permit, and you have this graphic in your packet, which you might be able to see better in terms of the colors. So in the City of Cattati, any, a property with any slopes over 10% have to get a hillside development permit, and in this graphic on the screen, the darker green colors are slopes over 10%, and the red are slopes over 15%. So this project in 2009 got a hillside development permit, and again, with this amended map, they need a hillside development permit. In 2009, it seemed that privacy seemed to be the biggest concern around their hillside development permit, and several conditions regarding privacy were placed on the permit, such as no upper story, second-story balconies. They wanted their outdoor patios to be two feet below existing grade, and they wanted the project to eliminate two lots, the Long Lund Hill, which are the lots at the very top of the site. So the map is quite different from 2009, and staff didn't feel that these conditions worked, but we still went through the analysis regarding privacy concerns. And through their, their changed project, the lots that are on the perimeter of the site are all set back 30 feet, they used to only be set back 20 feet, so those existing homes will have more privacy. The rear yard fences on the perimeter are proposed to be eight feet, and in terms of hillside design, by creating a less dense subdivision, we feel that better meets the intent of the hillside development ordinance. Staff also had the applicant prepare a privacy analysis, which is in your packet, I believe, sheet H3 through H6, which, where they've shown if neighbors can indeed look into their neighbor's backyards, and through the analysis in your packet, we agree that the project is designed in a way to ensure backyard privacy. So the Lund Hill privacy concern, so there were several conditions on the previous map to protect the homes on Lund Hill, some of them being, they wanted the windows oriented away from the Lund Hill property line, they wanted the number of lots to be reduced, and they wanted an eight-foot fence with a landscape buffer. So here's those Lund Hill, these are the Lund Hill properties we're talking about. This is one of the neighbors that voiced concern in 2009, and again, at the last designer view committee meeting. And this particular property owner would have three homes and back for them. And in 2009, when they said, oh, delete two lots along here, it was thought by deleting two lots would have less homes behind this particular neighbor. So this new map has more grading. So while the previous map, these homes were kind of built on top of the knoll, this new map actually grades the hilltop down, so the homes are actually five feet lower. There's one-story homes proposed back here now, so there won't be two-story homes peering. There's one- There's one, there's four single-story homes proposed, and this entire line of homes will be closer into the site and set back 30 feet instead of 20. So here is that neighbor, McGinnis is the neighbor with that yellow property in the previous slide. So in the previous map, the hillside goes up from this house, and there would have been a two-story home built on top of this green dotted line. Now with this new map, they're grading down the knoll, so the finished floor is actually five feet lower than the previous map, and it's only a one-story home instead of a two-story home. Also, it's set back 30 feet instead of 20 feet. And then the applicant's also proposed a five-foot landscape buffer and an eight-foot fence. So staff feels with all of these changes to the map, the previous conditions regarding Lund Hill aren't needed with the changes proposed, the map as proposed, I should say. So staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the hillside development permit because the homes that have been proposed are compatible with the homes in the existing neighborhood, and the redesign of the subdivision reduces the privacy impacts. And also, I didn't say it earlier, but the floor area ratio of this particular design is less than the previous design. Okay, SEQA. So in 2009, the city adopted mitigated negative declaration for the 62 lot tentative map. SEQA offers guidance as to what level of review a city must undertake when a project has been amended. And staff has gone through the SEQA guidelines and has prepared an addendum. It's also in part of your packet tonight. So it would be in an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration, and staff is asking that you adopt that because there have not been any new significant impacts that would result from this project, and there is not a substantial increase in the severity of environmental impact. And the environmental planner, Olivia Irving, who prepared the addendum, she's here this evening if you wanted to speak more about that. So staff's recommending that the planning commission recommend to city council the approval of the besting tentative map with the Dorfman connection, recommend preliminary design review, and also we recommend approval of the hillside development permit and further to adopt the addendum for 100-ballpark zone map amendment.
And if the chair would allow me, I would like to reiterate a couple of things that Lori said, so that you and the public can understand the context in which we approached the project. With the approved besting tentative map and page seven of your packet, and for the public, there's copies in the back, there is a table that compares the two projects for a couple of what we felt were critical design features and environmental features of the project. With this one, when we pulled the record for the previous approval and looked at the map and looked at the conditions and read through the minutes and the proceedings of the approval process, as Lori mentioned, several of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors had to do with privacy. And so the property has a hillside development overlay on it, and it would be extremely difficult to develop the property in the strict, with strict adherence to the hillside development regulations, and also meet the goals of infill development and the underlying zoning, which is neighborhood low. So the way we approached it was to say, okay, let's focus first on compatibility with the existing development and look at the buffer issues, if you will, the issues that are going to be important to the neighbors. And so a couple of things that I want to point out are that there is much more export. So there's more cut and fill proposed, cut proposed with this project, as Lori said, lowering the knoll, and rather than balancing the grading on site, there will be export from this scenario, and that is a change from the prior approval. So the reason for that is in order to get more of those compatibility issues, to get the setbacks that we wanted, to get the grading down so that the homes actually met the height restrictions for the zone and for the hillside. So that's where we started. We worked with the applicant on several of those issues, and the map has been through several iterations of design to respond to those. But I did want to make that clear that there is more export with this design than there was before. And one of the outcomes of that design is that the surrounding neighborhoods, those homes are built with what are called stepped foundations. So there may be stairs within the house that you're going up and down a half level or a portion of a level, either with the garage to the main house or within maybe some of the rooms of the house. With this particular design, there's a foundation design that they've used where, rather than stepping the foundation and building the structure upon those different foundation levels, the structure's going to be built more or less at the same level. It will give you the appearance of having a stepped foundation. That lets, and the project architect is here and could explain that probably much better than I just did, but the goal we were looking for was architectural stylistic compatibility with the neighboring communities, as well as a desire to have more usable yards. So with this scenario, the future homeowners will have flatter paths that they can build their yards there. Much fewer retaining walls going to be required in this design. So those were, that, just to explain our process, I wanted to call your attention to that. And then the last thing I want to call your attention to as you begin public, taking public comment, is that we received one comment letter, and that has been placed on the dais for you. And staff, because those were, some were technical issues, and that staff did prepare a response to those comments, so our response is on the top of that initial comment letter, and we're happy to talk about that if you'd like. So with that, I think we're concluded with the main presentation, and we're just available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thanks. Are there copies of that letter and response also available for the public?
Yes, there are.
Thanks. Questions for staff? Oh, yeah, thanks. I can get the lights back on. Questions from commissioners for staff?
Not yet. Not for me yet.
I had a few I wanted to ask. Can you talk through the zoning density requirements and how old versus new and that change?
Sure. The underlying zoning on the property is neighborhood low, and the density that's allowed and required in that zone is, ranges from four to six units per acre. The previous approval had a density bonus attached to it, so they were slightly above that at 6.3, overall 6.3 units per acre. This project, they have not requested a density bonus, and so they're going with straight meet the zoning, and so they come in at 4.6 units per acre. For the affordable units, we did apply the neighborhood urban standards to those so that we had some criteria for the design for those lots. So those are more in the 15 to 18 unit per acre and smaller lot sizes for the six affordable units.
And then can you talk through the inclusionary zoning requirement calculation? That gets recalculated when you change the number of units.
Sure. When the project was approved in 2009, the base requirement would have been 20%. Inclusionary housing would have been 20%. So they would have had to provide 20% of the units available to affordable, or excuse me, income restricted households. With the new, newish housing element that we adopted in 2012, we reduced that to 15% to be more consistent with the other county jurisdictions, and so the six units is the
We've been through this recently, but can you remind me of how the rounding works? Because that's actually only 13%.
The, it's sort of the grade school math rounding, so it's a straight. If it's .5 or below, you round, excuse me, round down. Above five, you round up.
All right. Any more questions for staff?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll open up public comment now. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this project, including the applicant. Just welcome to step to the podium. Anybody state your name and address for the record. So this is an opportunity to step to the podium, state your name and address, and put a comment in. Thanks.
Hi there. I'm Cynthia Larson, and I live at 8745 Faylor Lane, and I brought some visual aids today. So the reason why I'm here is I would like to ask you to adopt the revised plan that the design review committee is in favor of, specifically not having Dorfman go all the way through to Faylor Lane. In your packet on page eight, it specifies that the reason why we don't want Dorfman to go all the way through to Faylor is we're afraid that people are going to be cutting through the neighborhood. Well, yeah, they would be, but there's a little bit more to it than that. So the visual aid that I handed out, this is the 2009 approved plan, and the very first draft of this plan did have Dorfman go all the way through to Faylor Lane. And after two years of meetings with the developer and the city, we did get this approved without Dorfman going through. But the problem is, is we've been through two city managers, we've done through two city planners since then, and it seems like we're kind of starting at the beginning. So I wanted to just let you know why I'm showing you this. So Faylor Lane has 11 houses. I've numbered them for you, and eight of those houses have dots on them. Those dots represent change of ownership since the 2009 plan. Those buyers went to City Hall to find out what was going on across the street, and they were presented with this map that you have in front of you. They made a huge financial decision based on that map. It didn't have Dorfman punching through all the way to Faylor Lane. It didn't have headlights that would be projecting the houses number eight and seven. It didn't have a stop sign that would be 40 feet away from their driveways. I'm sure you all know where Faylor Lane is. It's a hill, and it's probably the most popular street in the city limits of Kattati. We have dog walkers, we've got parents with strollers, we've got skateboarders, bicyclists, runners. It's a real popular street. And I think that people driving through the neighborhood, if Dorfman goes all the way to Faylor, you're going to have the strappy drivers driving too fast, not stopping all the way, and I think that's a recipe for disaster. So I'm asking you today to approve the revised plan with Dorfman ending at Jagel. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tanya McGinnis, and we're at 8825 Lund Hill Lane, the one that of the previous 2009 approval was approved with one house behind it. The one thing that the city brought up is that this development blends into the existing neighborhood. And it might on all other three sides, but on our side on Lund Hill, we have a half-an-acre. All the houses are half-an acre. So to blend in, it should gradually go into high density, not right behind us. My other question is, they are digging down, but as I understand from what I was sent, there would be a three-foot retaining wall, and they're digging a lot deeper. With the current rains and everything we've seen in San Jose happening, retaining walls are falling, so I want to be sure that our hill is protected. The other thing is, as I understand, there is still going to be a buffer for the trees, but who is going to maintain the trees and who's going to replace them if they unfortunately die? But my main concern is still the three houses behind us. We're on half-an acre, and we're going to have all the noise from those three houses, and I would prefer it to be one as it was approved previously and put the other two somewhere else on the property. Thank you.
Evening. I'm Richard Maris. I live on Loebek Lane in Baja Kattati. I look forward to this development. As some of you may know, I was on design review earlier when it was originally approved or tentatively approved. I just have to say I'm very disappointed in the project as it is presented now. There's just too many things that are overlooked, in my opinion, and I don't expect my opinion to change anything, but I have to say it. First of all, it seems like a scorched earth project in terms of how it's starting. Just everything scraped off the land. No regard for existing trees that are there that could be saved. There's some very nice-looking, I would say teenage oaks that could be saved. There's some redwoods that could be saved. The original house was planned to be reconstructed. I think that should be saved. It's a historical building. Along with that, I think to make the project possible for people, because this would be a lot of revision, I understand that, but originally there were 62 lots worth of being developed, and I think there was more attention paid to infilling and higher density, and some attention paid to what seems like a nonsensical term these days, but affordability. It doesn't seem that's paid much attention to. If I had my way, I would revise this project considerably. And thank you for listening.
Hi, my name's Ben Garcia. I live in Hunter's Ridge, up of Clovey Lane. I feel that there should be development in Kattati, especially for people buying into this great town that I consider my home. But the one thing about this development, I'm looking at the Dorfman connection, and I think it should proceed but should not be included in this development. Several years ago, we bought our home there 26 years ago. After the fact, we had to come to the city and ask for speed bumps on Clovey Lane and on the existing street on Lasker. It was to a point where it's, the traffic was just too bad, and people were, we had a lot of children there, and subsequently, we came to the city and we had a speed bumps installed. That's after the fact of development. We had to, as residents, go there and have that taken care of. And I still feel that if we have this Dorfman connection, we're going to have more traffic in Hunter's Ridge. People do not obey speed limits, stop signs. I walk, I'm retired, I I walk, I'm retired, I walk that neighborhood all the time, and no one stops. If we have this Dorfman connection, you're going to put the burden on the Hunter's Ridge residents. And that's what you have to take into effect. I have nothing against have this development. It sounds reasonable. Hopefully, it'll be cost effective for people coming into Catati, the first homes or so. But you have to look at the traffic as you're putting on to Hunter's Ridge residents. And I hope you realize that we don't want to come back here and ask for some more speed bumps on Dorfman or this, because there's an increase of traffic. It's going to be there, especially during the commute times. And I've seen all the highway backup a bit, and they're going to use that as basically to, for the lights and everything, and just come on, get all the way to highway, and go onto the freeway, or go down south to Penluma, Pen Grove. They're going to use us, Hunter's Ridge, and I want you to think about that first. Staff says, they're basically saying it's okay, but it's up to you, the four of you, to really look at this and take into consideration the people on Hunter's Ridge, the residents of Hunter's Ridge. We're going to live with this. Staff's not there. We're there. So again, I hope you, this development goes through, but like I said, the Dorfman connection is one of the main things that I'm concerned about. And I will be telling all the residents in Hunter's Ridge to start looking into this, too. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Wayne Guy, 8419 on our place. I've got a concern about those eucalyptus trees on the southwest corner of the 100 Valparaiso property. And I've talked to Larry Coleman in the past. I've talked to the planning commission, and I've gotten different stories from both. The reason I want them down is they're a safety hazard, and if they do come over, they'll go through my roof. So I just like, especially before you start doing any bulldozing and moving soil and stuff, to top those trees or remove those trees, because they're a definite safety hazard. The easterly winds that come through there in the afternoon, I mean, they clear the deck of furniture, they, you know, you find tree branches. Last week, 15-foot branch from the eucalyptus tree. Oops, just cracked and fell off. And then the other thing is, I understand Lund Hill gets eight-foot fences. Does the whole development get eight-foot fences?
We'll take questions out and answer them later. Great. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Augie Staten. I live at 124 Jagel Street. I'm right next to the, where the street's going to go through. Augie Staten? Yeah, Augie, A-U-G-I-E. One of the things that I noticed on the new plan is the traffic control, which I am worried about the increased traffic pass at my house. But the new plan now has a stop sign right on my driveway, or right at my driveway, right in the middle of my yard. And I'm just, you know, I don't know if there's another way to restructure the traffic control, but I'm just worried about, first of all, being able to get in and out of my house, and then constant traffic close stopping right in front of my house. And that wasn't in the plan when we had the 62 homes. And now that the housing development's been shrunk down, it seems like there's, you know, there's more stop signs. And I know we want to try to slow the traffic down, but I don't know if there's a way we could redo it where I'm the only home that's going to have a traffic sign in the whole area right in front of my house at my driveway. And I was hoping there'd be a way to relook at that. So that's my comment. Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jim Waldinger. I live at 8817 Lund Hill Lane. And the only reason I came up here is to reiterate what these fine people are saying about people driving through our neighborhood. We lived there 29 years on Lund Hill Lane now. I'm worried about drainage, six-foot cut with a three-foot retaining wall. There's already an Eastman at the back of our properties. Love to see some good drainage plans, which way the water flow is going to go. And just to reiterate, people use Lund Hill Lane now to cut through, to go down to Valparaiso from Cypress. If Dorfman goes through, it's going to be a raceway. So when somebody that's lived in Catati for 45 years, you're asking for trouble if that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 8739 Feller Lane. And I'd like to reiterate the comments regarding Dorfman Drive going through. In the first commenter that came up here, Cynthia, she gave you a visual aid with numbers of houses. My house is actually number seven on her visual aid. And I actually did go down here to City Hall when we reviewed and bought the house in June of 2013 and saw the approved 2009 subdivision map and made the decision to buy the home. Had we seen this new plan, we would not have bought our home, which we now, now, we would not have bought it back in 2013. So I just wanted to reiterate to the community or to the city that this is something that's very important. And obviously, as you see, the road would be coming right into our driveway. And I'd just like to reiterate Cynthia's suggestion and to adopt the revised plan where Dorfman does not go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Langwise. I'm Tony's next door neighbor, 8741 Feller Lane. Just a big ditto. Cynthia explained it really well. And where the blue tee is, where you guys can see, that would be a private drive for those homes. And then the house behind it is where the punch-through would go through into our neighborhood. If that house didn't have to be there for some reason, because you have to have a, what's the amount of feet you have to have in order to have a punch-out in the neighborhood? That could just be a walk-through or a gated or chained portion where fire could get through or emergency services could get through. And I know you guys mentioned earlier, the staff mentioned bringing the neighborhood together with the punch-throughs. Well, traffic doesn't bring neighborhoods together. People walking and seeing each other and meeting each other and being out on foot is what, to me, brings neighborhoods together. And so that would just be really nice. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I'm one of the owners of the Catati 100A LLC partnership that owns this property. We bought the property in 2002, when the map was approved in October of 2009. As Lori walked you through, it had 62 homes. It was 2009. We pretty quickly discovered it was way too many housing types for the builder to build. It was, in our minds, awfully dense. We felt that we were up against a major effort with respect to the traffic, the neighborhood, and getting it financed in 2009. So we basically mothballed that map. If I remember correctly, in Vicki Parker's first couple months of work, she was nice enough to tromp around the property with us, at which time we suggested we do an amended map. So that takes us back to, I think, Vicki, you're going to have to remind me, 2013, 14? 2013, when you first came?
2011.
So we spent quite a bit of time working on this. We have today with us our arborist, our landscape architect, our engineer architect. We've had numerous documents sent in to Lori for the presentation, which included our environmental folks. And we, of course, have Brian Solow here to make sure we get the process right. I did want to mention and answer a couple of questions. The eight-foot fence all the way around the perimeter, yes, there will be an eight-foot fence all the way around the perimeter. The Lands of McGinnis discussion, we created the following presentation, which is similar to what you saw. And the concern about the cut and the retaining wall. Retaining walls are engineered by Adobe all over Sonoma County. This is not a problem. This is not anything new. If the retaining wall has to be five feet high, it will be five feet high. If it has to be six feet high, it'll be six feet high. When they do the cut, that'll tell us exactly how high it's going to be. The drainage will be done correctly. The engineering will be done correctly. With the lots lower on Lund Hill than was originally laid out, and with the homes being one-story homes, the folks on Lund Hill, and with the fence and the trees, the folks on Lund Hill will not be able to see the homes. With respect to noise, they're 10 feet further on the setback, and the single-story homes are designed and most likely will be marketed to folks who are, probably don't have children. So I'm really not too sure how we can solve a noise problem of three houses versus one house or two houses. But we have made every effort to solve the sightline problem. And with respect to the zoning, we don't have the half-acre zoning on this Valparaiso Vicki and Lori both touched on the amount of work we put in on the project with respect to the sidewalk down at the bottom where Valparaiso and Redwood Highway are. We have spent an immense amount of money to make sure we don't touch the wetlands, that we can engineer a sidewalk which the city wants us to put in that doesn't impact the wetlands. That has been a big effort, and we appreciate all the help we received from staff and from the M group. The historic building, the trusses for the new roof will be delivered on March the 3rd. So the building will be brought back to its original structure with the roof. It'll be a point of historic element which people can see, walk around, walk to. It is a compromise solution, one, again, that we spent an immense amount of time on. We both had, both the city and the applicant, had historians come in to determine what was historic, what wasn't. The rock house, as we call it, was considered historic, and so that's the, in essence, compromise solution we came up with. The Dorfman options. So we've, excuse me, we've created these boards. Dorfman goes through, Dorfman doesn't go through. We have our architect, who at an incredibly high rate per hour is going to hold them up here. Guy works with us on a number of things, so he can handle it. But I don't, I think what we've done is we've created for the decision-makers both options. We have fully put together plans for homes and setbacks and the calculations on the roads for both options. Vicki is much better at this than I am with respect to the exact amount of feet on a linear run for a road where the city's code suggests you have to go through. But I think we're long, long, about 60 feet on about an 800-foot run, so less than 10%. So the concept of Dorfman not going through, in essence, would be a compromise to the city code by less than 10%. Did I get that right, Vicki?
The code requirement is no one side longer than 500 feet or a total circumference of 1,000.
1,000 feet. Okay. So we're 62 feet short of that. So when we first designed it, we followed the city's suggestion and had Dorfman go through. That's the one Guy is holding. And after the design review meeting, though, believe me, we sort of thought that might happen, because Cindy Lorison had called my partner Larry, we started working on this where Dorfman doesn't go through. So we have fully developed both designs. And really, we leave it to the decision-makers at the planning commission level, at the city council level, or both, or a combination thereof, to tell us what they would like us to do. We're prepared for either one. If there are any specific questions you want any of our consultants to speak to, they're all here. But if I can answer any questions from the commissioners, I'd be happy to do that now.
So are other members going to make presentations?
Only if we have questions. Okay. It sort of works on the following. If Neil can't handle it, he'll turn around and somebody will come and save his ass.
So do commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I have a question about the design review, question about the two, the homes that are attached.
Yeah.
And that they're in one design.
Yeah. We'd be more than happy to do one design, Commissioner Moore. In a previous iteration, most likely in a previous year, we had them all as one, which is fine with us.
Okay.
Others?
What about on the design review in the city, I think had a little bit of a difference of opinion on the fencing along the side?
The fencing.
I don't think it was eight-foot fencing. It was like the landscape.
Yeah. What the, on the, on the side that's not the Feller side, the, down here, this run here, the Dorfman side here. One of the neighbors came up and appropriately pointed out that we needed to ensure people couldn't look down into their yard and swimming pool area. So we are putting the fence there as eight feet. If necessary, we'll make the fence higher, but we're going to put more trees and more screening there. So we will address that.
Any others?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nant, Vice Chair O'Nant.
I sense your frustration as you're talking.
It's actually, very honestly, not at all frustration. It's relief. We, we, we had a project in 2009, which in the timeframe that we were in, we pretty quickly determined was not going to work. And it took us two or three years to figure out how do we even restart the process? And in restarting the process, we had to sort of restart everything. And so there was a lot that we needed to do to get us to this point. And we've been very fortunate in that we've had really good communication with the staff and really good communication between ourselves and our consultants. And I'm just really glad that we're at this point now.
My question is that you have 45 units with what I'm thinking of as the Dorfman through plan. The other one that the general.
We would pick up one more market rate unit. So instead of 39 and six, we would be 40 and six.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent.
Any other questions? Let's see. I had one, you said eight-foot fence all around the perimeter. I just want to clear up, that's not a long Feller Lane.
No, Feller Lane, the houses look to Feller Lane.
Right.
There's a beautiful sidewalk and meandering trees and things that we spent a lot of time and effort on. You are correct, that is not a fence.
Okay. And one other question about the fence height, is that, I'm trying to look now for the, okay. So even at the back where there's a, say, approximately three-foot retaining wall, it's an eight-foot fence on top of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any more questions for the applicant? Yes? Vice Chair O'Nant, go ahead.
So we're looking at approval, and there's 160 conditions, 158 or so.
Actually, 156, yes.
156, excuse me.
Yes, yes. There is one condition I'm going to talk to the commission about, but please.
That was my question. I'm allowing you, I'm giving you the opportunity, are there any of these conditions that you feel are egregious or unreasonable?
Nothing is unreasonable when you put it in the context of what the city is attempting to do to make the town a better place to live. So everything that they've laid out, we have worked our way through and tried to find a way to either do it and do it right at a fair cost, or to come to some compromise where the city and the applicant are in, on the same page. The roof solar panels, we've sort of become experts on the financing of roof solar panels, because we have another project at Catati Station that is going to have roof solar panels on the tops of the apartment buildings. In the last couple of years. In the last couple of years, through a series of programs here in the state of California and throughout the nation called PACE programs, there has been a new way to finance solar panels and other energy-efficient equipment, including car recharging for electric cars. Here in Sonoma County, I think it's called the Sonoma County Energy Investment Program, Independence Program, thank you. I knew I'd get that wrong. Anyhow, the condition of approval basically says you will build 50% of the homes with solar panels on it. That, without question, there's no agony between us and staff on this, that without question raises the cost of those homes. Another way to enhance the cost to get into the home. Another way to do this is to work with the builder and the owner work together either on purchase or post-purchase and bring in real solar experts, the folks that put solar panels on for a living rather than a builder attempting to put them on. Where the building is already pre-wired for solar, already pre-wired for battery setups for electric charged cars. And the integration between the cars and the solar, the solar and the cars, the cars and the house, the solar and the house, it's pretty nifty stuff. And under this program, the homeowner could do it in the aftermarket or literally on move-in, where they could finance it through an increase in their property tax at a much better cost structure for them with respect to how to get into the house. So rather than an arbitrary 50% have to have solar panels on the roof, what we would like to propose is we wire the whole thing up and we put in place the Sonoma County version of PACE so that the market would tell us how many folks are going to want to put solar on the house. We'd obviously put solar on the models, we obviously would make it all available so that people would understand how it works and how they could drive their PG&E costs down. But that is one item we'd like to say, if we could find a compromise with the decision process, we would greatly appreciate it.
Excellent. 17?
16, I think.
16?
Or is 17? 17, Vicki knows, I'm doing it from memory.
Yeah, I got you. Is there a standard, Ms. Parker?
There's not a standard, other than what is in our draft Climate Action Plan, which targets 20%.
20.
The reason that we proposed this project due 50 was we recognized that, as one of the speakers said, the previous development did have more amenities for the future residents. With this one, it's much more standard subdivision, it complies with all of the minimum code requirements that we've talked about tonight. The new building code, the 2016 building code that was adopted, requires them to do pre-wiring. So just to pre-wire, we didn't think was going deep enough. So this project does actually much more interesting stormwater treatment. It's been designed into the development. The applicant and their design professionals, I think, did a good job of that and voluntarily proposed the interpretive signage by the stormwater. So we thought focusing on the more interesting ways of meeting regulations, plus having the houses be energy efficient from day one would be a great addition to the community that the previous map did not have. So that was our reasoning. When the individual homeowners, they can decide to participate in PACE or not, we don't have any control over it unless we require it as an exaction at the time of approval. So I think the builder would do a great job of making the information available, but at that point, it's out of the city's hands. So this was one of our bigger residential subdivisions that will help us meet the goals of the Climate Action Plan. That was a long-winded answer.
So I didn't jump fast enough at that one. Our practice is to hold questions for staff until after public comment, so we don't get into a back-and-forth with staff. So if you have follow-up with Community Development Director Parker, let's wait till after the public comment is over. No, that's fine, I was too engrossed in trying to find what we were talking about. So any more questions for the applicant? I didn't think I have any. Okay, great, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any more public comment?
I have a question for you.
Okay.
My name is Jim Oliver. So I'm retired from Lennar Homes as General Superintendent, built subdivisions my whole career. You say you're going to set trusses on your own house on March the 3rd?
Yeah, well, they're being delivered on March the 3rd.
Okay. You've got no erosion control. How do you put the trusses in?
Okay, sorry, this is time for comments.
No erosion control, they got ready done. So obviously, there's no erosion control. And yes, we've done the engineer. And if you'd like to talk to the engineer, please, go for it.
Hi, I'd like to say something.
Yes.
My name is Astra Duncan. My husband, my daughter, and I live on Pine Tree Circle, just across from the building that's going to be happening. And when I first found out about it, I was really excited. I thought, well, gee, maybe this is, we own a condo on Pine Tree. Maybe this is our chance to buy a little nicer house. But unfortunately, we are not low-income, we are not rich. It seems to me that the ratio of affordable, quote-unquote, housing to, you know, the general housing, there's no middle ground. And I guess it's sort of beside the point for this development because it's already decided by the city of Catati what's going to be happening. But I just, I love Catati, we love living here, but it seems like there's just the two extremes. And I wonder if that's been addressed at all, you know, for the working class. My husband and I both work, we have good jobs, but we could not afford one of these larger houses. And we don't qualify for, I think it's, somebody told me it was like $50,000 for an affordable home for a family of four. I don't know how anybody could live on that, but I just wanted to say that I feel very strongly about it. And I also wonder if there's going to be a mellow-ruse assessment, because I know the city walk, it says no mellow-ruse, but I have a real estate friend who's been trying to sell some of those places, or who's been talking about some of those places over across from Sonoma State, and they have mellow-ruse, and it's like $3,000 a year. And that's expensive, so.
I didn't understand the word.
Mellow-ruse assessment?
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you.
If anybody else would like to speak, come on up to the microphone.
I was watching on the webcast, so...
Okay.
What Vicki is not telling you, and I don't even think the Colvin Group knows, I sent them a court case from 2005, and it has a 2004 declaration from the federal Wildlife Service that Lund Hill, which is next to 100 Valparaiso, is in the breeding ground of the tiger salamander and has to go through federal procedures. What they're doing is they're putting it through California procedures and saying it's all the same. What they're trying to do is bypass the feds. And they've done this for every single one of the developments, the Village Walk, the Catati Apartments, those were okay, but this Valparaiso and Catati Marketplace are both subject, the breeding grounds are over by Stony Point, and they have to be 1.8 miles. They have to go through special procedures, and they ignored this. And they were sued, the city of Catati was sued in 2005 over this issue. And there has never been a count of the tiger salamander since 2003. And this, everybody's complaining, you know, neighbors are, this is how it all works. You guys will approve it against everybody's wishes because the developers... I feel sorry for Colvin Group, I think they should sue cities of Catatis terribly. They have put in so much time, they've jumped through every hoop. But the city has known since 2003, 2004, that this land needed federal, would be in the federal recovery plan. It went in, the federal recovery plan was signed and finalized last year. They've known this for a week and didn't even bring it up to this meeting. It is a major issue that they want to skip the federal approvals and build developments because they ran out of land in Catati in 2006. We had nine years of no growth, I mean, less than four houses a year. And so now we're going to fill in, they want the building fees, that's what it is. They don't care about the neighborhoods, they don't care about the atmosphere. So anyways, that's what I had to say. I hope it causes some change because I know most of the things I say are ignored, especially by Vicki and the city council, but this is fact. I've sent them it and everything. And I've been a resident for 45 years. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe this is the issue we have the extensive staff response to on our desk when we got here today. And there is a copy of the, all the documents that you sent here, including the me versus city of Catati at all. All right, any more public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close that and invite staff to answer any questions that they heard raised during public comment.
Yeah, I'd like, I guess, to start with the Dorfman connection to, again, explain staff's perspective on the street. So as you've heard several times, there's a code requirement, as well as general plan policies, that reinforce the development of interconnected streets and discourages cul-de-sac development. And one of the ways it accomplishes, the code accomplishes that, as well as looking at just sort of scalable and appropriate scale design, is by limiting the block length of subdivisions. And so somewhere in the midst of the process of the map amendment, the applicant did let us know that they'd had a neighborhood meeting and that the neighbors were concerned about the extension of Dorfman. So at a staff level, we do not have the ability to recommend to you that you approve a project that does not comply with the code. So we were very upfront with the applicant and said, you know, we won't be recommending that, but what we would like to offer to the decision-makers is that we will analyze it. So we'll look at it from a design perspective, we'll look at it from an environmental perspective, and if the decision-makers choose to override that requirement, then they can. So I think you've heard the issues. The traffic report did not show, it was negligible difference, and it didn't show cut-through traffic. Having said that, it's not, it's a modeling exercise, it's maybe not going to pick up those sort of convenient cut-throughs that people develop knowledge of over time. So by saying it doesn't show up in the traffic study, I'm not discounting that the neighbors think that it may happen because some of it probably will. So we have looked at it, there's no negligent, or there's no significant environmental difference in the alternative, so that is a tool that's open to you tonight. One of the gentlemen spoke about eucalyptus trees. I think the issue there was that the project was supposed to, and I, this was, some of this was before I came, so I don't have the whole history on it, but there were some permits issued for tree removals on the property that some people were unhappy about. Some of the neighbors, I believe, were unhappy about that. And so technically, there should not be a lot of tree removal happening on a site that has an approved development application because the trees should be removed only in accordance with either the environmental document or the actual permit applications to begin the new development. So typically, you don't want the trees coming down sooner than they need to be. Having said that, if there are needs for emergency removals of trees that are dangerous, we can certainly do that. We do that on a case-by-case basis, so we're not overly removing trees. The one speaker spoke about a stop sign at his driveway, and I believe he must be, if I have the pointer, yes, where Lori's got the mouse, I believe that must be that speaker's home right there. I'm looking for, yes, he's nodding yes, okay. So I would have to defer that question to the city engineer as to whether a stop sign is actually required at that location, so we can bring that issue up for the city engineer. I'll just make a note of that.
And you said he's here?
He is here, yes.
So maybe after you're done, he can come up and address that.
We spoke briefly about the solar panels and the condition that the staff recommended and happy to talk about that more or less if the commission desires. Regarding the affordable housing, the six units that are proposed as affordable meet the inclusionary requirements. Within that six, they're broken down among the three income categories of very low, low, and moderate. So there will be two in each of those income categories. So given that 15% that we are allowed to require them to do, we then try and split it so that you do get a more even mix. And the number that was cited, about $50,000, that doesn't, I'm not sure what that number is for very low-income households, that sales price is normally in the $150,000 range.
I think that was an income she was talking about.
Income, average area median income for Sonoma County this year for a household of four is about $82,000. So translating that to a sales price, very low units are around $150,000, they're restricted to a sales price of around $150,000. It depends on interest rates and HOA dues, et cetera. The low-income units are typically more in the $200,000 range, and moderates can go up into $350,000, $330,000, $350,000. So just to give you an idea of what those price ranges may be. That speaker also raised the question about maintenance districts or assessment districts. There will be an assessment on these homes. The city's developing a community facilities district, and it equates to somewhere around $450 per year that homeowners would be charged on their property taxes. And that replaces a development-by-development district. It would be imposed on all new development units, and it's meant to provide for city services such as police, landscape maintenance, public street maintenance, et cetera. So that is in your conditions of approval, the initiation of that assessment district. And then regarding the public comment that you had, the one that was received and was given to you regarding the tiger salamander, the speaker's just wrong about that. The lawsuit that she cites is one that the reason for the lawsuit was because the city was requiring mitigation to be applied, not because we were not doing it. And the properties are significantly different in that that property never had CTS surveys done, and that was a condition of approval of their project. The applicant didn't want to do those surveys, so he... The applicant didn't want to do those surveys, so he filed a lawsuit against the city. It remains that the map is still, the lots were created, no permits were ever issued on it. If someone were to come forward for permits, they would have to do CTS mitigation. This property, the subject of tonight's application, is different in that they have done the protocol surveys, they have been issued a no-take letter from Department of Fish and Wildlife, and they've gone through the processes that are required, and, um...
Not right now.
So the only change from the time that they received the, the determination of no effect was that, um, the critical habitat map became official. So there, so at a federal level, there's critical habitat designation over, uh, much of Katati's west side and some of the east side of 101. So that, we reviewed that both with the applicant's attorney and our own environmental land use attorney, and there have been several cases of state law that have said a change in regulations does not constitute a change in physical conditions of the property. So, and the last thing I'll say about that is the most recent survey for the property was just done this past October, so there have been consistent, regular surveys done. We've gone through the whole process of determining whether there are and have been changed conditions on the property, and the answers to all of those have been no. So, um, that's about all I can say about that. Last one. I, I think those are all of the questions that I noted. I'm happy to, to respond if I've forgotten some, if the commission has additional questions.
Questions for staff at this point, Vice General.
Ms. Parker, condition number 12, I don't really, I have to confess, I don't understand what that's saying. Revised parcel A to incorporate the surplus, R O W. Help?
Yes, um, with the discovery of the wetlands adjacent to Valparaiso, um, the city staff has requested that the applicant, um, re-map areas of public right-of-way because we, we did not want the city to inherit the wetlands, and I'm gonna ask Lori to give me a packet page that will help you orient to this as I speak. And so, we asked them to reconfigure the lots so that the wetland and the area that would typically be public parkway, so the planted area adjacent to the sidewalks, would be held by the HOA and maintained by the HOA with a public access easement over it. So in reconfiguring that area of the map, there was a little remnant parcel right at the, Lori's pointing it out, yes. There's a little remnant piece of public right-of-way right there that it just makes no sense to have, for the city to have maintenance responsibility over that little piece, so we've asked them to also map that. And I...
Okay. We're not, we're not having cross-talk right now, so any more questions for staff?
Um, excuse me, City Engineer Craig Scott is here if we want to address the stop sign issue.
Okay, let's finish with Vice General's questions, then we'll go to...
Condition 17 and 29 talk about the plumbing and wiring, so I think we've addressed that. Condition 51, if you read the last sentence, it almost says that they can only do interior finish work on Saturday. Interior finish work after the closing inspection only shall be permitted on Saturdays from nine to five. Is that...
Um, that is, yes, that's accurate. So, um, this is actually more lenient than the code allows for, so I'm glad you brought it up because it is a good discussion for the commission to have. Our land use code allows construction only Monday through Fridays, and it does not allow construction on either weekend day or on holidays. So, um, recognizing that construction can be disruptive to the surrounding neighbors, we've expanded that in this condition to allow interior work to be done on Saturdays between nine and five.
So I, I think that the confusion is you could read that sentence to say you can do interior finish work only on Saturdays from nine to five, you can't do it during the week.
Oh, I see.
So if you reorder those clauses to make it clear, you know, the only work permitted on Saturdays between nine and five is interior finish work, you'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Condition 74, talking about condemning or acquiring off-site property, is this, is this something that is foreseen, or is this just boilerplate?
That, that's just a standard condition, it's not something that I think we would encounter on this, just double-check with the city engineer. I don't think we're foreseeing that.
I presume that's in there so that if the city has to acquire some property to put the utilities through?
Or need some, or something.
Something like that.
Yes, it's, it's a standard condition that you'll likely see come forth, come forward on most development projects that accomplishes exactly what you just said, that the city has the ability to condemn if they need to. If we were going to do that, we would bring that back through a public process, but we also don't wanna cover the cost of that.
But, but not as foreseen for this project?
That's correct, okay.
Commission ready?
So you had mentioned that the, that no tree removal process necessarily was happening, there hasn't been permits pulled on those yet, but it seemed like in some of the public comment that there was currently an issue with some of the trees, I mean, with the branches, with the current storms. Whose responsibility is it with the trees now, if there's an issue with them, and what does that look like for the future if there's currently an issue? Could you address that piece?
Um, it's, it's, uh, the responsibility continues to lie with the property owner. So if, if there's confusion about whether or not the city can issue permits, then I, then the applicant is here tonight and they can, they can hear from us that yes, we can issue emergency permits if there is a stability issue. Going forward, if for some reason the development didn't, did not get built and the trees continue to be there, it would be the same process, we would do it, the applicant, excuse me, the property owner would be the responsible party. If the neighborhood is unable to find the property owner, of course, the city would help do that and oversee.
And then in terms of developing the retaining wall, it seemed pretty clear that, you know, the engineer within the project group would be going through that process to make sure it's sufficient, but then can you just explain the process in which the city would then go and inspect to make sure it's meeting the standards and so that our neighboring communities can feel safe with that process? And just like what, and maybe the city engineer can answer that too, whatever you feel comfortable with, whatever those steps and kind of double-check system is on that piece?
Sure. Um, there are really, in my mind, two types of retaining walls. There's a standard type that is pre-designed, if you will, to, that meets certain conditions so long as the footing is deep enough and the backfill is the appropriate height, et cetera, and it's installed properly. And then there's a second type which has to be designed specifically for that situation and what, in both of those cases, those retaining walls would show up on the improvement plans for the project, and they would go through a plan check process, and then as they're built, they would be inspected by city staff, by either the building official or the city engineer, depending on the retaining wall type.
Okay, thank you.
As far as drainage, I'm sorry, drainage's the same, the standard details that we would be, that we would require on the improvement plans, it would show how drainage would be handled, we would check that against the soils report that is required for the project to make sure that the water is gonna do what the soils engineer says it's gonna do and go forward accordingly, and/or ask for redesign if it didn't, it didn't seem like it was gonna work or consistent with the soil engineer.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
I just have a question, kind of piggybacking off of what Jamie was talking about with the trees. Extensively in the, in our packet, there was about the, the birds, the raptors, and I know the eucalyptus and a lot of the trees up there have a lot of bird population. Can you just address that a little bit of, because I know there's, there's certain process of when you can take trees down with, with the population that, I know we've, we've done it in the past where it's been kind of this slaughter of trees and so now we're not doing that anymore, so I would like that addressed.
Yes, thank you. The code and the project conditions do not allow tree removal during migration season, so basically the spring, um, and nesting season, I should call it, not migration season, but nesting season. So there's an out-and-out prohibition in the code from removing any trees over 50 feet tall during that season. If the applicant was in the middle of their whole project and the timing of it worked out that they wanted to remove trees during that period, then they have to do additional surveys looking for the presence of nests in them. So there is a relief valve, so to speak, for them if, because it's always hard to figure out exactly when the project's gonna come to fruition, so the code allows for that with these additional surveys. So it's meant to protect the nesting, the fledgling of the young birds during nesting season.
Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Just one question about the, the trees again, was there, are there substantial enough trees on that site to, to trigger an effort to, to save them? Not the eucalyptus, but other trees?
Um, there, there are a significant number of trees on the site, over 200 trees, I think, Lori can correct me. There, if you were to try and preserve some of those trees, it would result in a different, a much different subdivision design. There aren't trees out there that I would call, um, significant in their either age or size. There are lots of, however, having said that, there are lots of trees out there. So the approach we took was to recognize that there are a lot of regulations to meet for grading and hillside, and it didn't seem feasible to try and keep any of the trees because there weren't those significant trees, as I said. So the compromise that we came to, or the design theme that we went to, was to instead have the replacement trees be oak trees, the more native to our area, so that's why the street trees are, are oaks.
Okay. Were there any requirements in the, in the current tentative map to preserve trees in the building?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. Yes.
Thanks. And finally, would you like to have...
Okay, so, so the gentleman's question was about the stop sign in front of his driveway created, now we have a, a T-intersection where existing, there's Feller Lane that goes on to Jagel Street now, that a T is formed there. So what's proposed is a three-way stop, and it's, I think as background, it's, it's a low-volume intersection, and there is some discretion in the VICO code as to the placement of those stop signs, or even whether those stop signs are necessary. So, um, I would, I would recommend that between now and the, we're coming out of this committee, city staff will work with the developer to fine-tune that design, the location of those stop signs to work better with, his driveway could potentially be pushed further to, to the, what is that, north, sort of, it's, it's before is, is driveway, or potentially eliminating it altogether. But we have time, I think, between now and, and council to, to, to work that through and even during the improvement plan process. It's something we have a little leeway to fine-tune that design.
Great, thanks. Um, I'm gonna, here's how we're gonna handle the next little bit, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then I'm gonna, because there was a lot of new information that came up in staff comments here, I'm gonna have another round of public comment, but this one will be limited to three minutes. So we'll run a three-minute timer for anybody who has additional things to say, and then we'll go to council, uh, commission discussion. All right, so a five-minute break. Bursts, up to three minutes, you don't have to use all the time. So if anybody wishes to speak, this is your last chance for this discussion, so come on up to the mic.
This is what Vicki does every time. She says that I'm wrong when I am not wrong. Within the lawsuit, there was a determination that Lund Hill was, yes, the lawsuit was lost, but it was a mitigation that there was, um, the tigers, it was within the breeding ground, not the critical habitat, but the breeding ground, they have to have 1.8 miles from the breeding ground, and it was found to be within that. This is how Vicki gets around me, she doesn't allow me to speak back up. Though all the, all of the approvals, environmental, have been the state approvals, they have not consulted the feds in many years. This is, this is also a city that believes in very much selective enforcement. She did this game for 17 months so that next, with my next-door neighbors, no building codes, no safety codes, no safeguards were held for 17 months, and their damage was done to the neighborhood and the environment. And she treats me like, they treat me terribly, but this is how they always do it, they cut off my ability to speak. I have a councilman who lives next, who lives behind me, and he has taken down five, um, five trees in the last two weeks. Does he have a permit? No, because that's not the reality of the city. There, this, whatever, she speaks well, she does everything well, she may, she'll, but the reality is people get harmed by the, the decisions of this city, of this design review board, of, and you all follow along, and it's wrong. The feds need to be consulted, it's part of the, it's a requirement in this letter from the feds that they be consulted. It, yes, it would, the lawsuit wasn't, but it's not that I was completely wrong, as Vicki always likes to say, she's, she's also spread that I've been psycho, she's done everything she's possibly can, she, oh, don't laugh at me, you said it to my face. She, oh, don't laugh at me, you said it to my face.
You just have a few seconds if you want to add anything about the project before us.
Yes, I do, I feel sorry for Colvin Group. I really think they, they jumped through every hope, hoop they did it on. Yeah, they, I really feel sorry for them.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak at this time? Come on.
Hi, Ben Garcia, I live on Hunter's Ridge. Again, I was asking about Dorfman and Honor. I can't, if someone could explain to me what's, what's the logic behind that anyway? Planning, staff, anybody?
We're not having a discussion here, so if you want to ask a question, we'll try to address it after.
Well, I'm questioning this, is it just, it seems like it's a traffic overflow. It's, it's going to help, they're going to bring traffic into Hunter's Ridge. And I believe the staff said that it was connecting the, the two developments together? Is that what you said? Why, if I had friends in this new development, why would I want to go, well, I would just take Overwood Highway and then go to Valparaiso and come in. But you're just, what's happening is you're just bringing more traffic into another residential neighborhood. I can see if there was a park in, in Hunter's Ridge or a store, but it's not, it's just homes. So you're bringing traffic into our, in our neighborhood for the benefit of this development here. And that's what I'm, I'm concerned about. I, I know there's a need for housing in Catati. Don't get me wrong, I'm not, not in my backyard-type person. I know we need it. But I think there's has to, we have to sit down and really look at this and, and see if there's going to be problems down the road several years from now for our grandchildren's or, and, and look at this in a, in a way in the future and just say, well, there could be a problem later on when the, the neighborhood starts to establish that there's more cars. If there's 40, 40 homes going to be there, usually it's two cars per family, so we're talking about 80 cars. And traffic time, like I said, I've seen it. I'm retired, I walk through Catati all the time, and I see it, how it backs up. And it's really sad that people don't obey laws, they don't stop, they don't watch their speed. I've seen older people literally almost get knocked down by a car that, the, the, the person's on the way to work or taking the kids to school. And we have to look at that. I mean, these are great neighborhoods. Catati's a great place to live, don't get me wrong, great place to live. But we have to look at that. Like I said, I, I see this one older lady that really walks, and she almost got clipped by a car. And this is during commute time between 8:00 and 9:30, that's when I walk. And I'm out there all the time, I see this all the time. I brought it to the attention of a few of the police officers, and they take notice, but it's, it's there. It's there, and the way people drive and use the cell phones, it's just an accident to happen. And I hate to see a young child or an adult or an older adult really get seriously injured or killed. And it does happen, we've seen it in Runa Park, we've seen it in some of the other towns, where people are even there in the, in the crosswalks, they still get killed or hurt or maimed. And don't get me wrong, like I said, I'm not against this development, but I just can't see how you can bring in more traffic into our neighborhood and say it's just a commute, where we connect the communities together. Like I said, please, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, last chance for public comment, yes.
Hi there, Cynthia Larson, 8745 Feller Lane. I'm the original owner of my house on Feller Lane, and of course I wanted to understand what was going on across the street then, too. This is when the property was owned by Mr. Albertson, he was a veterinarian, and I didn't have the benefit of having a subdivision plan, but what I did have was a benefit of seeing that there was a stub at Honor going into the, into the lot, knowing that there is going to be a road going from Honor somehow into that subdivision. There's one at Dorfman and there's one at Jangle. There is not one at Feller. There was no intention of a road going into that subdivision. We have now, without Feller going into the subdivision, we've got Valparaiso, Honor, Dorfman, and Jangle. I don't think we need five entrances into the subdivision that has 45 homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, so I'm going to close that public comment, and we're up for commission discussion. So I wrote down a couple of, couple of items we need to spend some time on. One of the big ones is the Dorfman layout. We've, we've got two options that we've been shown, one recommended by the design review and plus that one there. And why don't we start with that one, and we'll move on to other issues next? Commissioner Moore.
I had one more question of staff.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Right, before we start.
Go right ahead.
So I think on the design review recommendation on the side street of Dorfman going through was what I heard is that they wanted no side fences on that and they wanted landscaping. So that's one of the other things we need to discuss because that's a design review recommendation.
Yes, it, the, the, let Lori bring up a graphic, we have one that shows what, the lots that it's applicable to. So yeah, the, and staff, and I believe the applicant as well, is amenable to that recommendation. It just sets the fence further back so that folks walking on the public sidewalks are going to be looking more at landscaping than just a fence right behind the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Quick follow-up on that, there are on the order of 10, 10 or 12 houses that have that indication on the map, so this, that indication was originally for the separate architectural treatment on the house with this, with this no fencing and fenced backyards only apply to all of those spots?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you tell me the condition?
This is on A1.0 of the color, it's the first page in the architectural set. At least I think, yeah. The orange marks were the corner side elevation enhancement. So is that the places where we would not have the fences along the side?
Yes. So as, yes, so all those with a red line adjacent to the Dorfman connection, and obviously if the commission does something different with Dorfman, then fewer of those lots would be affected. The issue that, however, of enhanced elevations, those do apply to more units than the, just the street side. So I'm looking, for example, at Lot 20. 20 and 21, we, I'd have to look more closely at that, but we.
You haven't marked off Vicki on this one.
So you're thinking those get the architectural treatment, but not the?
But maybe not, but maybe the fencing wouldn't apply, yes. But it, basically, the condition would be written such that any street side yard, the, the fencing condition would apply to any street side yard within the development and adjacent to the perimeter public streets, if any. Whereas the enhanced architectural would, would apply specifically to these shown in the graphic on A1.0.
But just an example, Lot 20 is on the street, it's on Honor Place there. So with that wording, the fencing condition would apply to it?
It would. When I first looked at it, I was looking to find out where the entrance was, to see where the side yard was, and you're right, it would apply on 20, 21. Gets a little harder, I'd have to, we'd have to look at that.
That's right up against the eight-foot fence or something. All right, so Dorfman issue. Don't all drop at once.
I.
Vice Chair O'Nance.
I believe we should honor what the design review committee suggested to us. And I don't see a downside of not connecting Dorfman all the way through. We add a lot that should make people happy, we delineate or we stop more traffic, that should make the people that are making comments happy. I don't see a downside to that. It appears that Ms. Parker can't promote that because of existing city guidelines. However, she doesn't seem to turn red when we. I'm not trying to be funny, I'm, she, it doesn't seem to be anything that, you know, she, she legally can't propose it or suggest it, but it, again, I think we should honor the work that's been done in front of us by the design review committee and proceed with that.
Other comments on that issue?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Commissioner Moore.
Well, for one thing, no one's really even discussed that Honor Place goes through, and if I really was going to cut through, I could cut through Honor Place and go right through also. Another thing is, is Dorfman's going to go through, it's just not going to go through, if we do this, it's not going to go all the way through. So if you're going to have cut-through traffic, you're going to have cut-through traffic by Honor Place and Dorfman, they're either going to go down Jangle or they're going to go Old Red. I've lived in this town long enough, I know every cut-through in town, so, and I, and you know, some of the cut-throughs we thought were, were not going to be, are. So, you know, I, I can go back and forth on this, I'd like to hear the rest of the commission. I frankly, I, I, I live on a, you know, I grew up on a grid, and that's where the old neighborhoods really prospered. You know, I've taken enough planning classes where grids really work, cul-de-sacs do not work. Everybody wants to live on a cul-de-sac, but they don't really work in real life because you have filter streets that are just full of, of cars. These really disperse the cars all throughout a neighborhood, so you don't have one street taking on every single car. If I lived on Jangle, I think I would be apprehensive to have that street be the main thoroughfare for that whole neighborhood. I mean, these are just things I'm throwing out there, that there's pros and cons to both plans. You know, like I said, one of the, the, the cons is having all that traffic on one street. One of the pros is, is dispersing it all throughout. You know, there, there is actually a, a good thing to have all kinds of openings in a neighborhood. So, and like I said, that's where you get these grids of older neighborhoods that everybody wants to live on in like Petaluma, is because there's so many different streets to get in and out of a neighborhood. But you know, I, I see the other thing I can say, I see that, you know, it probably will become a cut-through, because everything becomes a cut-through. You know, nobody's going to stop cars at some point in this world, everything becomes a cut-through. If you're on Old Redwood Highway, you're going to either cut through my neighborhood in L section, or you're going to cut through this neighborhood, or you're going to cut through the neighborhood that's above it or below it. It just is what it is. People are creatures of habit. So, you know, do we compromise one neighborhood to, to enhance another? These are all questions that, you know, I think we all need to vet out before we make a decision.
Commissioner Brady.
Yeah, I have some of the same, same thoughts as Commissioner Moore. Is there parking? Can you guys tell us about these little indicators around the map, is parking on both sides? I can't remember on Jangle, which, where's the red curb?
There, you, you mean in the proposed development?
Yeah.
There is parking on all of the streets, yes.
Both sides?
Both sides.
Yeah, I mean, I just know in most of the, the plans that we do, I'm always the one that's like saying something about parking because we never have enough. So, I mean, that, that was my concern, if it, if it doesn't go through or with shared driveways, is then we, we go through with this, the homeowners come in, and then there's complaints of parking. But, you know, I recognize there's issues currently on Lund Hill with, with already people cutting through, so I mean, I think it's realistic to think that it would soon be a thoroughfare or a cut-through for people, I mean, if they're already using it in that way. You know, I, unlike you, I can see, I can see an argument on both sides.
And I, I, I definitely am, am in favor of the language that's in the general plan and the land use code about the, about interconnected neighborhoods in the grid that, that, or not necessarily a grid in a, in a windier place, but interconnected places, I think are a lot more livable, and I would have a lot more, I would feel a lot stronger about this if this, if Dorfman continued on the other side. And, and so it would be a pretty clear-cut case then that Dorfman should cut through, should, should continue on through and be a continuous street. But given that it doesn't continue across Feller, I, it's, I think I'm, I'm leaning more towards Vice Chair O'Nance's suggestion that we leave designed, designed decisions to the committee named for it, so.
He said I can either go both ways, and, you know, if we have the consensus where it doesn't go all the way through, that's fine with me. I just, like you said, I wanted to make sure everybody knew why these things, these decisions are, are made, because we like neighborhoods to go through, we like people to be connected. And it's not always being connected just with cars, I mean, it's connected with people walking through different neighborhoods. So you're not blocked off, you know, with a cul-de-sac. But yeah, I could definitely, I, I would be fine with that.
Me too. Chair, if, if I could add one, one thing to your discussion, both during DRC and tonight, there was a suggestion that if the auto connection doesn't seem to make sense, that maybe a pedestrian-only connection would facilitate some of that interconnectedness without the follow-on nuisance issues. So that is something also that you could think about and discuss.
So I'd be interested to hear any thoughts on that.
Yeah, I would love that. That, that would be something I'd be totally in favor of.
Could we ask that someone with evidently a high hourly rate?
Only if we reopen public comment. So we can do that if you all wish to. But let me, let me get.
Why don't we, I, I'd like to go through some of these questions and our.
See what else comes up.
Yeah, can we just talk about it a little bit more before we talk to the applicant?
Okay.
I think if we did like a pedestrian walk-through, I mean, it would have to, you'd have to really keep in mind like privacy of potential homeowner, and to be able to do that.
Well, I know we have them in L section, and we have them on the sides.
Busy.
They're well-used.
Yeah.
I mean, they're well-lit and they're pretty well-used.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and they connect this, the arterial streets back and forth.
Is it your impression that they do create much nuisance for those?
No, I don't think they, I don't think, I've never heard anybody say anything that they, they didn't like them. I mean, they're well-used by all the neighbors, they go back and forth, and the, the kids, so they don't have to go through the whole neighborhood, you know, they can just go back and forth.
All right, so if you, if you want to formulate some questions that we can ask the applicant when we reopen public comment, write them down, and we'll try to go through some more. But I'm, I'm not hearing anybody who wants to make a strong pitch for insisting on Dorfman going through?
No, no.
Okay. And then, and we'll get back to the pedestrian possibility later. One, one question I have is whether a pedestrian walkway would still allow the addition of another unit there. So that's a question we can ask when we get there.
That might be a trade-off.
Might be, okay. The fences on the side frontages issue, so, so this is the side facades, so this is the other, the design review issue you brought up. Anybody have a sense on that one? Anybody have a sense on that one?
I like the idea that we soften those, some of the eight-foot fence type things. I think it should be on a case-by-case basis where you see the development and you can really see if it works or not. I think especially if, well, we're not going to do all the way through Dorfman. That's kind of a moot point on those. But I do like the idea of not having that wall of eight-foot fence.
Yeah, I agree. And this is for like the setbacks too, right? So you see some of the landscape.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I agree.
Quick question first. Are the backyard fences also proposed to be eight feet or is that just the perimeter fence?
I believe the side yard fences are just six feet or the, sorry, backyard fences are just six feet.
Side and back. Well, that's another question we can confirm when we open back up. Anybody who is feeling like we ought to not go with the Design Review Committee recommendation on that one?
No, I like it.
Okay. Other issues that we need to have a conversation about?
I would like to just make one comment on the critical habitat for CTS. Just in my past life, I was on that committee for a lot of years. And critical habitat is now, the feds are actually doing critical habitat in our area because we were supposed to have a plan and we didn't. So just to clarify that we do go through the feds and the state of California. So just to kind of clarify that, that if there was tiger salamander on this property, all the criteria would be met. We're pretty careful about that in the city of Gattati because we have critical habitat everywhere around us. Even probably my backyard, but I'm not saying it. But so I just wanted to put it out there that if you, the tiger salamander is very well-protective in Sonoma County and no project is really done without, if they're in critical habitat. They're well-vetted and all the surveys are done. So just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Anything else anybody wants to bring up?
I have one other question. I just want to make sure the Design Review wanted the duplexes all won. And so are we okay with having them all won? Yes.
Fine with me.
Okay. What about the historical structure?
I am loving this historical structure, especially since my good friend Prue has just passed away. And I know that she was a big fan of this. And I know it's probably not one of the things that the neighbors are probably thinking that it's viable. But I think that the loss of these historical structures in the town is a travesty. And I think we need to preserve some of these, even if it morphs into something else in the future. You know, I think she felt very strongly and I, as a past Historical Society member, feel very strongly that we need to preserve these things for future generations to know what Gattati used to be like.
So I think the issue here is that, so they're, none of the plans involve removing it. It's whether it's preserved as a fenced-off thing to look at. The Design Review Committee asked that it actually, well, I guess they.
They want it to be torn down.
Torn down or figure out a reuse. And the reuse possibility sounds physically prohibitive. It's an unreinforced masonry structure which doesn't lend itself to public meetings, right? So but I do have concerns that, you know, a split rail fence in front of an old stone building is not much of a deterrent to people who want to go play in there. So I do have some concerns about it. So we are going to reopen, so I'll give you a chance to talk about that then.
One of the things is, there's a lot of things in the state of California that you can't go into anymore. You know, one of them is, I think they're starting to, the fort down in Petaluma.
Yeah.
Is starting to become one of those where they're probably not going to do access anymore because it's kind of starting to become an issue. So there's a lot of structures that have now been, you know, pretty much you can't go into. But I still think the history of them and the viability that you can take it a class and say, this is what used to be here and this is, this is part of our heritage, is still a very viable thing. I mean, I don't think everything has to be played on and gone into or, you know, touched. I know our society now is very kinetic that way, but some things can just be looked at like in museums. You don't always have to touch everything. And I look at this as something that can be a learning tool. You know, we go through the fourth grade class every year in the city, maybe that, you know, something like that.
Well, I'm.
I think Chair Ford's probably giving more to like the liability of it, right? So like whose responsibility, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, but.
So, so I think when we reopen, we'll invite the applicant to address safety and that issue with that, with that building. So. But I'm not hearing anybody who is feeling strongly about following up on the DRC recommendation to insist on reuse or. I don't think that removal is on the table. I don't think, I mean, that's a, on starter with historic status, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would require a wholly different environmental document to evaluate the loss of the resource and under SEQA retention of the resource and whatever its condition is always the first priority.
So, so DRC recommended either removal or reuse. Is there anybody who wants to follow up on their recommend, on the removal recommendation? Okay, how about the reuse recommendation? Anybody want to push for insisting on that? Okay, so we're okay with that as it is, although I'm still interested in hearing about the liability or safety issues. So the inclusionary housing issue, I, as I read the ordinance and it currently specified, the old ordinance under which the tentative map was originally approved apparently required 20% inclusionary. Currently, we have a 15% requirement, which we also had prior to that. I don't know, we went 15, 20, and then back to 15. But the ordinance reads 15% of the total number of units, which in fact would be seven for this. And so the Community Development Director Parker has a different reading of the ordinance than I do. And that's fine and I'm not qualified to figure that out. But 15% of 46 units that we're now at is 6.9. And, and the ordinance does say that rounds to seven. So the, I, this developer is not going to like me because I did this last time that he was here. I'm going to ask that the city attorney weigh in on that before the council takes it up because I think the language is quite clear that 15% of the total units need to be inclusionary. Now, they're split, one-third, 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 very low, low, moderate. Obviously, you can't split seven equally three ways. And so that's up to council how they handle that. But the six versus seven is something that I would like to ask that the commission request staff request an opinion on that before, before it goes to city council.
No, I'm fine with that too.
And then just comparing, excuse me, comparing this to the original map, I am disappointed in the loss of a significant number of smaller homes. I'm sympathetic to the speaker who is dismayed at, you know, a small number of deed-restricted affordable homes and a much larger number of for a working-class family really out-of-reach homes. And I know that's what, where the market is right now. I mean, it's certainly where the, where the sweet spot is for development. But it's distressing to me to lose the townhomes and flats and things like that. Just want to put that out there. Any other comments before we reopen public comment to ask questions to the applicant?
No, but I just wanted to say, piggyback on that, I think it's just an interesting comment that you have. Somebody up here has a half-acre lot who doesn't want anybody looking at them. And then you were talking about affordable housing down here. I just, Gattati's an unusual place to live and we have a lot of different people that live here. And so we try to make everybody, you know, happy. And I think when you make nobody happy, I think that's the best bet.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to reopen public comment. Here we go. Come on up. And other people can use this time after, after the applicant speaks as well if you wish.
Okay, so one of the questions was on the rock house. So the design there is to have metal doors and metal windows bolted into the rock so that people can't get in. That deals with ensuring that we don't have liability of people coming and going and starting fires or smoking dope or whatever. So that, that's the answer to that question. With respect to the affordable housing, yes, we've been through this numerous times now. So we, of course, we're taking 15% on the market, number of market, you know, it's 39 or 40, that's how we got to the six. We've had a number of land use attorneys look at this, so it's news to me that it's on the total. But I will tell you, since I've tried to work on the financing of this, it's problematic. It's problematic at six. At seven, I don't know. We're, it's a real issue. Last but not least, I'm in complete agreement with Commissioner Moore. The perfect negotiation is where everybody sort of ends up relatively comfortable but not comfortable or relatively unhappy but not lividly unhappy. And with that said, we've spent a couple of years now trying to find where everybody can be relatively comfortable. With respect to two items, if it's okay, I'll just use this. This walkway, our count would be if we could do the walkway, people would walk by about three homes to get to Faylor Lane here, through here somehow. We would need the city to give us relief with respect to the setback rules. We might be able to skinny these houses down a touch. But with all due respect to the math of it, it's one, two, three houses to get to Faylor. If someone's walking around here, they're going by about nine or 10 houses. Now, I walk all the time and a six-house pickup, I'm not so sure, really makes a big difference as far as flow through a neighborhood to the next neighborhood. In the end, everybody's going to want to, let's say they're walking their dog or strolling their child, they're going to want to make a loop. And so you're cutting off this part of the loop admittedly to do this part. But are people really going to be walking down the Alprizol onto the Redwood Highway? Aren't they going to sort of be walking around here and then back out through here to make their loop? We're not picking up a whole lot with respect to this walkway idea. We've spent a lot of time trying to figure out what's best. And every time we've talked about this walkway idea, we've got the response that, well, it'd be pretty tight. And it could be, it's not necessarily so great to have people so close to each other's homes walking by. And what are we really getting out of it? So I did want to make that point.
Thanks.
Also on the topic of finding compromise, so all of us are equally uncomfortable, which I think is a good theme for these kinds of projects. Vicky pointed out earlier in her presentation about the grading, when we go for the grading permit, how much grading there is. We would love it if the city could give us some relief with respect to the height from finished grade versus average grade versus original grade on some of the homes down that, this area here towards Alprizol and Old Redwood. Because that would significantly reduce the number of trucks that are going to run up and down Faylor Lane. It immediately, admittedly, as Vicky has pointed out to us a few times, it's a short-term pain for long-term gain. But I'm not too sure what the real gain is because some of these houses, if they're a foot, foot and a half, two feet tall, higher, I don't think they affect anybody versus the standard, and I believe it's either 27 or, I think it's 27 feet? Did I get that right, Vicky? 28? 28. So if we could let them be from their final grade, a number like 29 or 30 feet, that's hundreds of trucks we're going to save.
So rather than exporting all that fill just.
Right. And as I, as I said to the city manager, I'm looking to save 100 trucks here, 100 trucks there. I'm not, you know, it's, it's not like two or three trucks. And so I do think that does impact the neighborhood during the construction phase. And I do think it impacts the environment. I mean, it's a lot of diesel fuel. But with that said, I think we've covered everything and I hope we've answered all the questions. The, as I said, we have a whole mess of people here that are more specific in their knowledge of individual items than I am. But if you have any other questions or anything else, we can bring talent to the table, please.
Any more questions with the applicant? Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it then.
Anybody else in the public wish to speak? All right, I'll close the third public comment on this item. All right, discussion on the, on the project as a whole.
I just have one more thing about the solar.
Yep. Thank you.
I'm okay with having the solar incorporated on 50%. I think we're giving up a lot of open space when I look at the last tentative map. And I think people are, who are buying their first home, sometimes would rather bite the bullet and do the solar right off. And if you have the option of not doing it, then you're not going to do it. And you're never going to do it because there's never enough money. So I'm okay with doing it right off the bat. I think those homes, once they get sold, I think people will be happy with, with having that. I wish I had it in my house. I wish I bought it and it had solar.
Anybody else on the solar issue? Yeah, Vice Chair O'Nance.
Would you clarify, Commissioner Moore, are you talking about item 17 on the permits?
Yes.
Going to 100%?
No.
No?
No, I'm, I'm okay with the condition that we have.
I agree with you then.
Okay, nothing else on that issue? All right, so as I see it, we're okay with the historical structure plan as it stands. Total number of homes looks like it's going up to 46. We're asking for attorney's opinion on the inclusionary zoning requirement. We're proposing we go with the DRC recommendation on the Dorfman alignment that it doesn't go through. We're going with the DRC recommendation on the fences for the side facades. They're not defenses along the sides of those houses that are on, on streets. On the side is along a street. We are recommending that the duplexes go to a single architectural treatment. And we're sticking with condition 17.
And what do you want to do on the walkway? Do you want, do you want to explore that or?
And do you want to explore the walkway further?
I don't feel it's necessary, but it's fine.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right.
No, I would just say with those notes.
I can do a motion.
Okay, great. Commissioner Moore?
So.
There's three motions we need here.
There is three motions and if you put the screen back up, I can probably do all three. The tentative map and the amendment and just read off the, oh, questions?
There's, there's actually just the two motions. It's shown as three descriptors in the staff report in the agenda, but it's actually two resolution motions.
Okay, so I move the reprove resolution, I guess, resolution one, is it? Okay. I'm recommending the city approval of vesting tentative map amendment, hillside development permit and design review for 45 lots, or 46 lots as the case may be. Um, including four, or tentatively seven, um, affordable housing lots. Um, and I don't think we changed any conditions. With, um, all of the recommended-
Do you need us to incorporate all these notes into the motion somehow?
Into my motion?
No, we don't need you to incorporate all those. And, um, if the record would show that, um, the motion as you're making it would accommodate any, um, changes that occur from the city attorney's determination in terms of unit counts, then you can proceed with that motion the way you've-
Okay, so with the, um, with the caveat that the attorney vets any affordable housing issues that we have on, on this resolution, on this, so, is that good enough?
Yes, I think the proceedings will show the intent.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, there's a motion before us.
Second?
Great. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Chair Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Can I have another resolution? Okay. I'll make a motion, the resolution of planning commission of the city of Gattati recommending city council doctrine, uh, dandum to the 2009 mitigated, uh, negative declaration for the 100 Valpriso vesting tentative map amendment prepared under California, um, under SEQA.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Chair Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
All right, and if I'm reading it correctly, that completes this matter at hand. Is that correct?
Yes, it does, thank you.
All right. Thank you all for spending your evening with us. It was lovely. Let's do something different next time. All right. All right, we'll move on to the next matter at hand, which is the annual chair and vice chair election. And for this, I'm going to, um, ask Community Development Director Parker to run this portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your service this time. It's greatly appreciated. Before we open it up for nominations, I'll just, um, let everyone know that, uh, Commissioner Hancock, though he could not be here tonight, did, uh, let us know that if he were to be, um, nominated for either of the positions, he would be happy to serve. So, um, you're free to elect him to one of those if you so choose. Um, and maybe to expedite the nominations, uh, maybe we could just ask if any of the four of you are not interested in holding the office, if you could just let us know that now and then we'll, can eliminate you from nominations. Was that, was that a real-
I'm interested in serving as commissioner.
Okay. So at this time, I would, uh, take nominations for anyone other than Commissioner Ford and we'll have a vote on those nominations.
I'll nominate Steve O'Nines for chair.
I would second that nomination.
Okay, we have a nomination in a second. Any other nominations? Okay, maybe we can vote for that. All in favor of appointing Commissioner O'Nines as chair for the 2017-2018 planning commission hearing year, say aye.
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 Huzzah.
All right, let the record show that that's unanimous. And now we will take nominations for the vice chair.
I nominate Jamie Brady.
Okay.
I'd second that.
All right, we have a nomination and a second for Commissioner Brady as vice chair. Uh, any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Brady for position of vice chair, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Forgot that last time. All right, uh, let the record show, Carrie, please, that that was unanimous. All right, thank you very much. Thank you for, congratulations on your new positions and thank you. Greatly appreciated.
Commission? If not, my first official act will be to adjourn.
Reports of, by staff.
Oh, I beg your pardon. There is, we have reports by commission.
Staff, we'll give you just a brief update on a couple of things to let you know what's coming forward. Um, this commission was very interested in, um, the wayfinding program that was a part of the bike and pedestrian master plan update. So I just wanted to give you, um, an update on that. We are in the midst of, uh, developing a scope of work for a consultant and will, uh, be applying for a grant from SETA in April. Um, so you'll see that item go before the council to give us permission to apply for that grant. Um, so hopefully if, if they give us the, the permission, the, the grant is, um, it's formulaic, so we know we'll get some money out of it depending on the size of the pool. So from there, we'll complete the RFP process and hopefully move forward with that project quickly.
Great.
Um, we have another ordinance that's coming, that'll be coming before you, dealing with accessory dwelling units. Um, as you may know, the state passed some regulations that were meant to, um, streamline the process for people developing second units. And so we've got a draft of ours and we'll be bringing that to you soon to look at. And then finally, um, we're set to begin our local discussions around, um, the regulation of recreational marijuana. And, uh, it's, you heard it here first, our workshop date is, uh, Thursday, March 2nd. And then we're, um, identifying a second weekend date for a second workshop on that. So, um, I'll, we'll be getting that noticing out and, and letting everyone know the times and format for that shortly. And, uh, other than that, we're, um, we're focused on getting tonight's project to the city council and tackling these other sort of long-range planning things that we've got going on. And, uh, we're busy.
Ms. Parker, a few months ago, I asked about a follow-up on the deteriorating condition of some of the traffic light poles and white poles in the center. Did you have any follow-up on that?
Um, let me ask the city engineer, we did discuss it briefly, um, the, and I'm sorry if you can remind me that-
You're losing the protective coating, uh, especially at the, uh, the center, Old Red and, and the poles are, are-
Valpriso too, I think, yeah.
The, the coating's flaking off, they're, they're, it seems like they're deteriorating rather quickly for being rather new.
Well, uh, we'll take a look at it and see if there's anything we could do to, uh, peel that old paint off and recode it or, you know, freshen it up, so.
Anything else, Ms. Parker?
Excuse me, no, that was it. Thank you.
I had a, a question about the, um, the Old Redwood Highway project north of the hub. Um, one, one piece of that that was very important to this body and its bike pedestrian advisory committee role is the, the bike lane striping at that horrible intersection of Gravencian Highway and Old Red, which was intended to be contrasting color, green. I'm wondering what's the status of that?
Sure, if I may, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. The, the project, uh, went into the fall with the, the crosswalks being done and then the paving, we did, uh, surface paving of, of that whole section and some striping was done at that point. But the season turned on us and with the cool weather, we don't have the temperatures, sufficiently high temperatures to put the, uh, striping in. So we've been in a holding pattern until the, the spring comes along and we get some warm days. So what you see out there is not complete. We, we will get the green bike lane all the way through that intersection and it'll, it'll be a lot clearer once you see it being complete.
Great, thanks. I was, uh, worried it had been value engineered out, so glad to hear not.
I, I have just one. Um, I attended the, um, it seems so long ago, in December, the planning, um, conference over at SSU, which is always great. Um, you know, I hadn't done it in years and so it was, it was really a nice refresher of, um, some issues that, you know, just for us to, to look at and to meet other planning commissioners and so it was good. It was, uh, informative.
Anything else? If not, we'll declare the meeting closed.
Thank you all very much.